All right, everyone, if we can find a seat. I really, really, really appreciate everybody holding off. And thank you to the City Council for this. I'll explain more when we get into our general meeting, where we're at and why we were summoned by the Governor to Long Beach today. During my comments, I'll explain more about that. But today, we're in the presentation period, and thank you to Mayor Potem for getting it started. But the City Manager and I really wanted to be here for these recognitions. So we're going to open it up with the City Employee Service Recognizations and our Human Resources Director, Pamela Muse.
I'm Pam Muse, the Human Resources Director, and I'm here with Monica Guerra, the Human Resources Specialist. The Mayor and the City Council would like to recognize employees who've been employed with the city for five or more years that have not previously been recognized for these longevity milestones. These employees have shown dedication and commitment in their service to the city. As we call your name, please come to the podium to receive your certificate and pin, and then remain standing up here so we can get a picture at the end. So Monica is going to begin.
If I butcher your name, I'm sorry, okay? No. James Bradley, crossing guard.
Jim took a new title.
The chief said he was going to make me a crossing guard.
Antonia Brisbecca, firefighter paramedic.
Could you say how long their service is if you do an announcement?
This one is for five-plus years. We're doing five-plus years currently, right now. Okay, we'll just put that aside. Police Sergeant Dodd Chang.
He just left for a traffic accident.
I'll access to that one, too. And let's hope the Chiefs don't make the playoffs.
Police Detective Larry Gaines. There you go. And then you could come around and stand up. Going to get a picture. Lead Facilities Technician, James Harbin. Aww, how big he is. I know. Human Resources Director, Pamela Muse. And last but not least, for five-plus years, Police Commander, Corinne Pickett.
Okay, these are employees with 10-plus years. We have Arnold Herrera, accountant. Kayla Blava, maintenance technician. Luke Rainey, Deputy City Manager. This next category is for employees with 15-plus years' service. Police Commander, Gustavo Paez. And Police Detective Sergeant, Philip Weigel. Okay, now we have the 20-plus years. We have Pablo Encino, Lead Maintenance Technician. Larry Essex, Police Sergeant. Linda Kelly, Finance Director. Frank Stewart, Fire Captain. And Scott Whittig, Public Works Supervisor.
Excuse me, excuse me, please, before you leave, I want you to know, you have been here with us, you've been us through tough times, and you've been here in good times, and I thank you for that.
I second that. Thank you.
Very well said. Our next presentation is Little Morongo Power Poles Presentation. This is by our Public Works Director, Daniel Porras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a presentation in front of you for Little Morongo Power Poles down Little Morongo Road, north and south of Teabunch Palms. We have these power poles, and these are special power poles, they're transmission poles, so they're higher voltage than your regular distribution poles. Along this whole corridor, we've had multiple projects, majority of the recently cannabis projects and other projects that have been conditioned, have been approved to be constructed along this road. Part of the conditions of approval require the installation and construction of full street improvements. That includes undergrounding all power poles that are in front of the property, putting in streetlights, putting in curb, gutter, sidewalks, and paving from centerline all the way to full right-of-way, the entire frontage of each property. That is our standard condition of approval. Unfortunately for this area, these power poles cannot be undergrounded, they're transmission poles, they must remain on top due to high voltage. Therefore, there's been some, many discussions, many different designs, many, many different alternatives that we have reviewed over the past few years, trying to figure out a solution that works for both the development and the city as well. Just move on to the next one. So Little Morongo, north of Teabunch Palms, this is the ultimate width. The ultimate width's 100 foot wide, right-of-way. It's four lanes, a median, and two parking lanes on each side, curb, gutter, sidewalks, and landscaping. Little Morongo, south of Teabunch, is three lanes, a median, and four foot, well, actually it's four feet for bike lanes, and then there's an additional eight-feet landscape, which is curb, gutter, and sidewalks. If you look at the existing power poles, they're located at about exactly 30 feet of right-of-way. The future right-of-way would be at 55, south of Little, south of Teabunch Palms. Therefore, the power poles will remain right in direct way of traffic. Therefore, they do have to be removed in order for us to complete the entire full-street improvements of that section of road. Here's kind of a drawing that shows where the 30-foot line would be. It'll be directly on top of the second line, and the 110 would be all the way to the, to the right. Conditions of approval currently say that the developer is to construct full-street improvements, move the poles to a new right-of-way, which would be where the SW is at, the landscaping behind the curb, which will be protected and away from the street. There are certain restrictions that we have came across. One, the cost to move the power poles is between $200,000 and $500,000 per pole. Some projects have 10 poles, some projects don't have any poles. Unfortunately, you can't just move one pole, you have to move them staggered because they're in line. So if you see the bottom, we have four little poles, and then you, now you have to not only move the poles, but you have to install new poles. This creates a very, very massive amount of expenses that majority of developers or projects would not be able to complete in time. Therefore, in essence of all, the requirements and other restrictions, we have modified the condition of approval and council and planning commission to leave as is and defer the improvements and to use a temporary access road. Currently, projects have a full-width design, but the conditions have been to defer into a future time where all the power poles will be removed, and to construct a temporary paved access in and out of the facility. What we're realizing now is that we have a lot of temporary access sites, but we don't have any full-street improvements, and we have some brand-new beautiful buildings, brand-new parking lots, brand-new, a lot of circulation, and we have these temporary access roads. In an effort to still complete the entire road, make all the projects, do all the improvements, and meet all SCE and Riverside County requirements, we came up with some different alternatives. This is one of the alternatives that we actually went into detail for. The option one was to complete all these street improvements, leave the power poles, but protect them, have one median, one lane, and one bike lane. They will still have the ultimate right-of-way for a future project to remove the poles, but for now, you would leave them in the road. We still construct the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and have landscaping. Here's kind of an aerial overview of what it would look like. You'd have, currently, there's two lanes, you would have a median, you would have one lane, and then you would have a pole, which would be some kind of barrier, some kind of island with a, with a, with an actual bike lane in the back. The option two would be to construct a similar design, but instead of having a median, you would have two lanes. This would actually add additional capacity for the roadway for future traffic. Here's kind of going to, here's, here's a little bit aerial with an overlay, has two lanes, also the pole being protected with the raised, raised protection, and a bike lane on the outside, and then a curb, gutter, sidewalk. This will also give you the 55-feet right-of-way for a future project. Then we have the third option, which was to construct the full-street improvements and leave the poles where they're at, but acquire the right-of-way for future project, install a curb and gutter in front of the poles to protect the poles and the drivers, still have a median to begin and end left turns, and have a driving lane in each direction and an eight-foot bike lane. This option was the safest option that we determined. As you can see, this is, this is, it requires the least amount of improvements or least amount of changes, but it still gives the ultimate right-of-way for future regional winding project. The safest alternative provides the poles behind the curb, it has one separated driving lane in each direction, one median lane to begin and end of turns, it has a bike lane and a sidewalk. The ultimate right-of-way will still be dedicated for a future, future regional road riding project, and the alternative actually still gives all the full-street improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, ADA ramps, driveways, and landscaping. This option was presented to Riverside County. Little Morongo, to the west, is Riverside County. Little Morongo, to the east, is Desert Hot Springs. Therefore, in order for us to modify the road, we would have need approval from Riverside County Transportation Department. We took this conceptual plan to Riverside County, Riverside County has reviewed and approved it. We also took this conceptual plan to Southern California Edison, who also reviewed and approved it for the distances and the safeties between the poles. Our city engineers and our team have reviewed it and also approved it, which will come up to the final alternative. We have two current projects that are actually proceeding in the design. If you go on Teabunch and go north on Little Morongo, you'll have two projects that are adjacent to each other who are ready to move forward with this installation and this construction. This will finalize their entire project. If this, if this alternative was not available, the project would remain with the temporary access road, although the entire project would be completed. That completes my, my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. So I was just wondering why the other options weren't presented to Riverside County and the other agencies. It just kind of feels like you're showing us option one, two, and three, but you only went forth and got more information on one option, so it's, it doesn't really feel like we really have an option between one, two, and three, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the first two options were presented, and SCE completely denied them because of the barrier and the protection of the poles. So they actually did not allow that at all, they did not allow poles to be in a median. There's far more restrictions when you have a median, there's distance restrictions, so they would not allow that design. This design encroaches about, I think, six feet into county, therefore, county was, was open to pretty much any design that we would do, as long as it did not affect their traffic, which none of them do. So they were presented to them, it's just option three was the most feasible for all the agencies, when we did present it to everybody.
So by feasible, do you mean that those are, they only approved option three, or they are also okay with option one and two?
They approved option three, did not approve option one or two.
Okay.
But we still presented everything to them.
Anyone else?
So, well, SCE is correct that one and two are no good, I'm happy to agree with them. Can you put up option three again, the visual, that one right there? So first off, will this allow us to designate this road as a regional arterial when we get to the general plan?
Yes, it's designated by the ADT, Average AD Traffic, so yeah, you will.
Even with this design?
You would, even with this design, yes.
And the green area here, there was one talk about, and it's been done in other cities, where you keep the poles down the center, just like you have here, this is really much improved over the other ones, and other designs were talked about, but to have that, instead of being just landscaped, have that be a frontage road, or perhaps a bike lane, or a landscaped bike lane. And the, is there any talk of, any consideration of that?
The consideration was one with a future bike lane expansion. We would be able to allow it on there, it'll be a separated Class III bike lane, similar to what the CV link conceptual plan would be. So yeah, there is definitely room for expansion for bike lane, pedestrians, landscaping, meandering sidewalks, and so forth. This is just a basic one, seeing, seeing the, the actual sidewalk is behind the curb, but there is, there is a, a design or capability of actually doing it, yes.
And so we're only talking about improvements where there happen to be buildings, right?
That's correct.
And so if there's a 50-foot gap between two projects, we're just going to leave that untouched, or we're going to go ahead and fill that in?
We'll go case by case, but we are requiring transitions to be installed between both projects.
Okay, I'm just going to make the pitch that while they're in there doing it, if it's reasonable, you know, I mean, maybe a mile is too much to take on, but we have a problem here in this city where we have, you know, frontage in front of a building, and then there's a section, you know, maybe 500 feet where there's nothing, and then we get to nice, improved curb, I would like that whole thing to look like a boulevard, and we need to explore as we're doing this, to see what it costs to go ahead and pick up the rest of that so it looks like a proper boulevard. But I would like to look at a frontage road to where the traffic going in and out of these facilities are off on a slow-lane frontage road, and then the, the other express traffic is moving down the center, and it's obviously too late for that, but. And then the other thing was talk about realigning the centerline of the road, and possibly taking some new stuff that's maybe beyond the right-of-way on the west side of the road, and I know there might have been some structures in the way, but that would be certainly much cheaper than...
Yes, this alternative, when we presented to county, since that site is a county, we needed their approval. This one, I think it's six feet, which is what the median, half of the median would, would require for that additional lane, would not be any obstruction to any buildings. If we do our ultimate width of 110, which is 55 each direction, that would be obstruction of buildings. That's why, too, we came up with a plan where we still have, can have that, I guess, that change between both the city and the county for future growth, but at this point, we, we can still be safe with everything, with the median to begin and left turns, and a driving lane for both directions.
And so you're protecting that right-of-way on the west side via the county, as far as, you know, it's a dedicated public right-of-way, nobody can encroach that with new development?
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions?
All right, Mr. Porras, thank you for the presentation, and we'll see how things go in the future. All right, at this time, we're going to go to our regular session, that's our 6:00 PM session, and I'm going to officially call it to order, the regular meeting of the City Council. The City Council is serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for February 19th, 2019, for our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmembers of all.
Present.
Mayor Potempi.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Again, we thank you for sitting in. The City Manager and I had to go to Long Beach to meet with the Governor, and we'll explain more of that during our comments, if you're interested in that. We're going to start with an invocation tonight. I do have two reverends in the audience, and they're never shy about praying, so if you guys want to duke it out on who's going, no. Pastor Talib, you've got longevity here, would you like to say a prayer for us tonight? I would appreciate that. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Gardner.
Thanks for that job.
You got it, I like doing that to you.
So it's by his. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come to you this afternoon. We thank you for peace, grace, mercy. We thank you for clarity of thought. We thank you, Father, for those that are in the process of making decisions that you would give them wisdom and favor. We ask this in your most precious name. Amen.
Amen. Everybody ready? Let me get it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I understand that the closed session's been moved to the end of the agenda, so there won't be no city attorney's report as of yet. If anything comes of that, the city attorney will report out after that closed session. The approval of the agenda, at this time, will the City Council will do any amendments to the agenda and/or approve a consent calendar in whole? Is there anybody that would like to speak on the consent calendar tonight? All right, is anybody would like to take anything off the consent calendar in the council?
Motion to approve the agenda, moving closed session to the end of the meeting, and approving consent calendar as is.
Thank you, Senator. Passed, did you? Okay. We're going to move on to public comments. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment, portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council, and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. I have three public comments. If you want to speak in public comments, there's blue cards in the back, you may fill one out and give it to the city clerks. Our first speaker is Rakita Grant, followed by Dr. Bill Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, residents. I'm here on behalf of a committee that I'm working with in, within our community. Dr. Bill Goodwin is part of that commu, um, part of that committee. Pastor Talib McMichel, Steve Parkin, and we have some other committee members that are not here. What we're interested in is renaming two streets within the city of Desert Hot Springs. We would like to meet with the City Manager within the next three weeks, if at all possible, and be set on calendar the second meeting for council in May. That's pretty much it for my city, um, my public comment, outside of the fact that it is Black History Month, and I want to share with you what's going on at the high school. This February the 22nd, we have the Taste of Soul, the Fourth Annual Taste of Soul. So the high school would like for you to come out and participate and enjoy their performance. And my last public comment is I'm working on another committee that has to do with the public safety, and they're interested in the alternative routes or bus stops. So if one of the council members is part of the Sunline Transit Board, if they could get in contact with me, it would really be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
What time does this start?
I'm going to leave the flyers with you in the back. It's February the 22nd, and I think it's 5:30 to 8:30.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bill Goodwin, followed by Mike Bacardi. Mike Bacardi is my last blue card tonight. Anyone that want to speak in public comments, this is your second call.
I'm Dr. Bill Godwin with 1-0.
Godwin, sorry.
Thank you for hearing us out. We're, we're excited to be able to bring this, this issue to you. We believe that Desert Hot Springs is a wonderful, diverse community, and changing two street names to maybe make it a little more inclusive is, is all about what I think we should be committed to. And as a pastor of the church, Pastor Talib and I, and many others, we believe this is just going to be a wonderful experience, bring great publicity to us. As Palm Springs changed one of their streets to Rosa Park, I think it's going to be exciting for us to bring before you our thoughts and our, and our plans, and hope that you'll support it. And we thank you for hearing us, and we pray that this is a good addition to our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Bacardi, my last blue card.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, staff, citizens. Just a few announcements. This Saturday and every Saturday, the Friends of the DHS Library Bookstore is open from 10 to 3:00 PM. We have a very large amount of books, and a shout-out to Carl Stober for his generous donation. He gave us about seven to 10 boxes of books, because they were all over the back of my car, so I'm not sure how many were there. The address of the bookstore is 66580, 8th Street. All of the cookbooks this month are three for a dollar, and we have amazing deals. So please come by and stop at the only bookstore in Desert Hot Springs. The next three events I'm going to mention are all sponsored by the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, of which I'm the chair. The Classical Music Concert is this Sunday, February 24th, at Grace Church, 17400 Bubbling Wells Drive, at 4:00 PM. Pianist Monica, I'm not going to say her middle name, Leverett, is coming to us from Massachusetts. She's making a special trip out here just for this. She will be performing on the newly donated piano that the church received from SoCal Pianos in Palm Springs. The next item is Securing Peace and Hope. The Arts Club is meeting every Friday from 4:00 to 7:30 at the Lozano Community Center, which is 12800 West Arroyo in Tedesco Park. This is a group that is providing classes and training and education for at-risk children here in the city, and I'm very proud that the CCAC was able to help out with this. The last but not least, for Black History Month, the Smart Academy Enrichment Program will be hosting a panel discussion titled Black Students Matter: Past, Present, and Future. Please join us for this informative and enlightening panel discussion. It is from 5:30 to 7:30, right here in the Call May, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, and that's February 27th, again, from 5:30 to 7:30. I also want to make a quick comment about Desert X, that's here in Desert Hot Springs. I understand that we helped with the Art in Public Places Fund to help bring this here, which is, I think, is amazing. I want to throw out an idea that I've mentioned to Scott, that possibly the one that's on Aliso, we could talk to the owner and probably do, try to do a part, private-public partnership and put a park there, so that stone artwork doesn't need to be taken down. People have noticed also that all of the butterflies have gone from the middle of Pearson, they've been getting damaged, and we couldn't control it, the city was trying to fix them, and so they've all been pulled, and they've also been, three of them have been put in the island at Aliso, and I can't remember the cross-street, there's a little island right down from where the Desert X installation is, and they will remain there permanently. The, the island has been completely landscaped, and a shout-out to City Manager for that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Michael. All right, no other public comments? Anybody would like to speak in public comments? This is your final call. All right, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the City Manager Report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to refer real quickly to Doria Wim. She's going to give an update on the Kind Music Festival and the signs that are on Palm Drive that have given some confusion to our community.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is just a really brief update to the community. Over the weekend, we had some signs go up on Palm Drive, just alerting our residents that there is a special event that's going to be taking place this coming weekend, on February 23rd. Initially, I think some of the language on the signs had led some in the community to believe that Palm Drive would be closed. We would never do that to you all, so Palm Drive will not be closed on Saturday. The sign, the language on the signs are going, being changed, and they will read something to the effect of, there's a special event that will be taking place from 2:00 to 11:00 on the 23rd, that delays are expected, and that there's a suggestion to use an alternate route, but it is not mandatory. It's just really alerting the community to the fact that the special event is taking place. That coupled with the recent rains and... Um, that coupled with the recent rains and road closures, just give yourself some extra time on Saturday when you're commuting in and out of the city. I know it's a little bit of an inconvenience, but this is a great opportunity for the city to, um, host a music festival as such as the Kind Music Festival. So, uh, that is it.
Thank you, Dory. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I'll move on to mayor and council member comments. Who would like to go first tonight? Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things to start off with. Um, I want to commend a couple of people, uh, here in the community. First, uh, I wanted to give a shout out to Kurt Saint Amant for some trash pickup. He, on his own, decided to go pick up the, a lot of the trash along the path to the Desert X Ghost Palm, uh, installation on his own. Picked up a whole truckload worth. And it's things like that that really make me proud to represent this city, to have citizens like that who will take it on their own to go out and pick up trash for a special event. So a shout out to Kurt on that as well. As, uh, major kudos to the city public work staff for their prompt cleanup on the storm damage last week and on getting the roads reopened. I know they worked long and hard and it is very much appreciated and very much noticed. Excuse me. And I love seeing all of the great reviews that we've been getting and the people visiting Desert X. Um, I have stopped by all of the installation several times. They are well-loved, well-liked, and people are commenting that, "I've never been out here. This is so cool." And so I think that, uh, helping out Desert X get here was one of the wisest things that we have done. Um, a couple of meetings. Uh, I attended the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Meeting, of which I sit on. Nothing to report there. I was also at the SeVag Energy and Environment Committee, and we discussed a bill that's pending up in Sacramento to create districts for, uh, regional, uh, air quality projects, allowing local areas to vote for, uh, tax funding measures to improve local air quality that they're trying to push through in Sacramento. We'll have to keep an eye on that. And, um, one last thing, it was a very sad note, uh, and I hate to hint on a downer, but, uh, in reading our, our police reports this week, I was very distressed to read of three, two at one school and one at another, attempted suicides by elementary school kids. And it just broke my heart in reading that. And, um, I don't know if there's anything at all that we can do about it other than ask everybody to be aware of the kids and what they're going through and what it is. But to see eight, nine, 10-year-olds contemplating and attempting suicide at school just absolutely broke my heart. And I have to give a, uh, commend the police department for the effective way that they handled that and got those kids taken care of. And all of them, uh, survived, but it's, it's just a very tragic thing. And I think the training that we give to the police officers and their staff on handling things like this is paramount, and I think it pays off. And, uh, I, I, I don't, it just frustrates me that I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. So that's it, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Pye?
I want you to know that regarding the street changing, the city manager and the mayor is waiting to meet with you. I, I've talked to them and, um, they're ready to meet with you. So that, that part is not a problem. I attended the parade of Riverside County. Um, actually, it's the President's Day Parade, and it's part of the 73rd Annual Riverside County Fair. I attended as mayor pro tem, um, of the city. And that's why I didn't start the meeting. But it was a good event, and I've never been to the parade before. And, um, they gave me a car. I happened to be sitting in front of a group of kids that were playing drums. So I got to dance in the car also. Behind us was, um, uh, Spal- it was Spal City, however, it had, uh, sponsored by, and I'm going to miss someone, Art Foundation, Sings Automotive, and Top Shop. And I think I may miss one. That was right behind me, and they had, um, a group of Latin dancers, and they also had the queens. So, um, it was a very good event for us. Also, I wanted to state that Desert Valley Disposal during the January cleanup, um, they picked up over 35.66 tons of additional waste collected and disposed. And they also collected five additional tons of material that was recycled. Um, they're working with us to keep the city clean. I'm done.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you. I won't go too long. Um, on, um, was it February 4th, I attended the, um, subcommittee meeting for the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Um, that's, um, RENA for short, um, subcommittee formed, uh, at a SCAG to try and sort through what the numbers are going to be. And, um, basically what we learned there is that the state's being pretty dictatorial on the distribution of these numbers. You have, um, well, a situation with, um, the, basically the, the short of it was is regionally, there's a number established. The state has a target goal for us, and then it gets set up, divided up through a sub-region. And historically, Desert Hot Springs has ended up on the short end of the stick, being a poor, working-class community, but at the same time ending up with most of the low and moderate income housing. And the spirit and intent of RENA was to make sure that, um, people could find housing where they worked. Well, as we know, we are, um, everybody's driving 30 miles to work, you know, from, in Desert Hot Springs. So typically, the housing should be nearer where people are finding their jobs, and that isn't the way it shook out. And either we weren't at the table or whatever else happened, and we ended up with very high numbers. So over the course of the past, what, eight, nine years, um, we saw from Councilmember McKee, we're, you know, working on that. We ended up getting, uh, interjected in the fifth cycle, got an equity modifier interjected for cities like ours, San Jacinto, other ones that have been, had these numbers piled on them, and got the number cut down quite a bit. And then I know Joe McKee, he worked on it in the last RENA cycle. And so now further going forward, trying to get some things in, made some progress on, you know, getting some consideration for cities because the big push at the state level right now is to build, was it 10 or 30,000? I'm sure the American gave us the number. He was up there at the meeting today. Uh, some incredible number of new homes that they wanted to try and sort out the housing crisis. Well, the cities that are built out are having a hard time figuring out where to put them. So what the state's looking is where is their vacant open land? But the problem is, we got all the vacant open land, and so the risk for our city is that we get saddled with a whole bunch of low and moderate income housing, which doesn't meet the other goal, which is to put the housing near transportation and other things. So, um, it's a very precarious time for the city. Not that we don't want to be a partner, but, uh, that the idea is not to, um, have us, all the other cities, we just love to have us take all of it, so they don't have to have any. So anyhow, that was a two-hour meeting, and then those will be going on, their schedules, and I'm sure the staff has all the, passed all that off for the schedules there. I attended the Water District, Mission Springs Water District Meeting. Happened, uh, there was some major rainstorm or something. I couldn't get out of town, and, uh, they had their meetings at 3 o'clock. So usually my schedule is such that I'm busy doing something, but I was able to, um, um, make the meeting. And I know normally we have a fixture here at the meetings. Russ Martin, Director Russ Martin is sitting in. I see today we have a new face, Commissioner, or what, Director, right, Steve Grasha. So welcome to the city council meetings. Um, and then, uh, what we got, the, Dory, I told you about the Kind Music Festival that's coming up Saturday from 2 to 11. And, uh, I tell you what, you hear from everybody else across the valley that it's a big deal for the Coachella Valley, not just for Desert Hot Springs. And if you got a chance to go out there, it's not going to be that expensive for us to get down there. And, um, so what, what were the price of the tickets now?
Residents can actually get a discount. Local residents of the Coachella Valley can get a discount by putting in local sale. Uh, when they purchase tickets, they will get it at a reduced cost, which I believe is, uh, $55.
I think I saw something lower than that now. Even, that might be the VIP price. So anyhow, it's a really good deal, then it's a good opportunity. So hopefully people show up dressed warm, I understand. Uh, Desert X, I want to thank the staff for their efforts to, um, get that brought to the city. There was some problem with that last year. I don't think we got really what we should have. Um, kind of a, was a little tacky of an effort before. And I think, uh, we've gone from having what I think was arguably probably the worst display last year to not only the best display, we got the best display in the Coachella Valley. I've looked at all of them. And this one is that, that, the ghost tree I'm talking about, it's just absolutely fantastic. We, so anyhow, you guys did a great job turning around a, a bad situation from before and making it work. So great job. I was a little bit madder at them than, than you guys were, so good job. Um, we got that one pulled off. And then, um, I see something here, a suggestion about a street name change, and I'm, I'm pretty big on process. And I think that process would start with, I'm, you know, certainly a city manager taking a look at it and seeing what the proposal is. But something like that, I think, needs to move through at least steps at the planning commission and make sure the different commissions have a chance to weigh in on it and that, uh, we see how that goes with our street naming policy. And if we do have a street naming policy, we've, this has been a problem area or a troublesome area in the past for the city. And so we need to make sure it's handled properly so that all the sensitivities of everybody are, are taken care of. And what else do I got? That's it. I'm tired. I've been, oh, I don't know. Oh, what did I attend? Somebody tell me what I attended. You guys are going to mention something that I was at, and I always forget to mention it. So, no, all right. I'm getting friendly looks from my fellow councilmembers, which is welcome. They heard me say I'm done, so they're all smiling. Okay, I'll take it. Good job. Thank you.
Ms. Vala?
Um, mine's very short. Uh, I attended a RAP grants committee meeting, and I will be approving those recommendations to the larger board, uh, next week. Um, and then I also attended the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission meeting. So once again, we, we continue to buy land. That's what we do every meeting. Uh, but of note, uh, we did, uh, approve a pilot program, uh, to recycle sand, which sounds very weird, but it actually serves a vital role for this community. So as you know, the Coachella Valley is very windy, and we end up with sand all over the roads from our local sand dunes. And then, uh, SeVag goes out and, uh, they sweep up the streets. But then what ends up happening is that, um, the sand dunes are now being depleted of sand. So we're trying this new, uh, program where SeVag will actually collect the sand and, uh, go, kind of sift through it and ensure that it's, uh, still good quality and, uh, good for the wildlife in the desert. And then they'd essentially go back and redistribute it to the sand dunes so that, uh, our little critters can keep living a little happy desert life. So that's kind of exciting. We'll see what the results are later.
Mr. Betts, you have one more comment?
Yeah, just one more thing. I've had some people contact me about the condition of our post office. If you've driven by there, it is absolutely deplorable. And I understand, uh, from staff that we have now issued them some citations and two citations, and that, uh, this has been going on a long time. And I, I was in contact with Congressman Ruiz's office, and, um, she's trying to look at it. I guess Cathedral City has similar concerns about their post office, but theirs can't possibly look as bad as ours does. So anyhow, everybody is raising concerns about that. Uh, that's getting worked on full court press, and hopefully we don't have to go, um, too public with our complaint. But I'm ready to if, if we don't get some satisfaction on that. Well, God bless you if you can get something done. I know that when Mary Bronen was here, we tried and it did not work. Tried with Congressman Ruiz and, and the local senators and assemblymen, and we've never gotten anywhere. For some reason, they feel like as a US government, they trump us when it comes to co-compliance. So I, I know that you're a dog with a bone sometimes, and if you can get something done, I hope you get this one done. Desert X, um, fantastic opportunity for Desert Hot Springs, as, uh, council members said, that they, the display two years ago was just terrible. They came into the city, they put up a display without even partnering with us. Since then, they learned a lot, according to the new, um, staff members and, uh, board of directors. They first met with Dory and I about a little over a year ago, and said they wanted to do just some displays. Again, they picked two sites that were not in the city limits, um, that had Desert Hot Springs addresses. So we educated them on the community. They actually partnered with Two Bunch Palms and one of our smaller, uh, hotels. And they, they put together two fantastic displays, and they had the pre-trustee, I don't even know what the party was called, but a couple of us council members attended it. It was a donor party. That's what it was. And I've got to say a few words, um, and introduce the city council that was there. And we got to see the, uh, Ghost Palm at night, right when it was going dark. So it was beautiful. And it was a great opportunity for Desert Hot Springs to kind of kick off Desert X. And I don't think people realize how much art is in our community until you actually drive around and see it. So it's a great opportunity, and thank you to the CCAC for what you guys are doing with the art. Uh, Councilmember, um, Gardner and I met with some of the cannabis industry and some of the issues that they're having. And then we met, we brought in staff on that, hoping to clear up some, some misconceptions. And then Mr. Gardner's working with the cannabis industry on some other misconceptions and hoping to clear those things up. But what I wanted to say on this is that my door is always open, and if anybody in the industry ever has an issue that they would like to sit down and talk with, I don't think I've ever denied anybody a meeting, and, and my doors can always open. And if it's not in the office, because I do work full-time, I usually make time for you outside the office to meet with you. So please reach out to me if you have any problems. Diane Feinstein's office about every year or so sends staff members down to talk with us. Um, our representative for the Coachella Valley actually made an appointment with my office, but, uh, had to, had to move it. So Ms. Wim stepped in for us and, uh, took that meeting, and we kept putting the things on their plate as sand, the snow, and other things that are important to us here in Desert Hot Springs that the senator can help with. So, um, with that said, um, we'll give more of a report as, as time goes on. Um, or we met with our lobby, lobby, it's been a long day, Mr. City Manager, our Washington lobbyists. Uh, we had a phone conference with them on some of the cannabis industry, uh, some of the things coming up in cannabis industry. Uh, there's going to be some talk about banking here real soon, and, um, so we're looking forward to that. And they're leading us in a path, uh, to possibly testify in front of Congress, but we'll see how that goes. Um, the Air Museum Gala, this is something we support each and every year because they support us for our Veterans Day with a flyover. And so the city of Desert Hot Springs, uh, some of its council members would like to go down and be part of that. Uh, it was a, a great event the day after almost four inches of rain. So a 10-minute drive across the freeway to the Air Museum Gala took us a little over an hour to get there. So it was, I, um, it was well worth it, though. A fantastic event put on, very, very elegant, and, uh, it was good representation by your Desert Hot Springs representatives. Um, thank you to the mayor pro tem for stepping in for, uh, me at the President's Day Parade. I was asked to be part of it. I said, "Sure," and then I didn't realize it was my wedding anniversary. And my wife was taking us on a small surprise trip, and we weren't going to be back in time that morning for me to attend. So I, I reached out to Mayor Pro Tem, and she stepped in for me. But happy anniversary to my beautiful wife. Two, two years, and she's still with me. Thank God. Street Naming Committee, they've, uh, made their presentation today that they're concerned, and they, they have some, um, some thoughts. I did meet with, uh, I did phone Reverend Talib and talk with him, and I've talked with Ms. Grant in my office. And our next meeting is being set up with the city manager. I explained to him that there is a process to street naming, and it has to go through the public process. So they're very interested in what that process would be so they could report back to their committee, and they're working hand-in-hand with the city, so it sounds good. And then last, I wanted to talk a, a little bit about what happened today. So, uh, the city manager was at the manager's conference for League of Cities last week, and he was asked if his mayor received a notice from the governor's office asking to meet. And so he called me immediately, and there was an email that was sent about an hour before he called me, and it was an invitation from the governor's office to meet. Now, if you'd watched The State of the State, uh, which I watched most of it, the governor actually, one of his platforms is housing, and he wants to, to, um, build, um, a large amount of housing over the next four years. Uh, so he's proposing funding and all kinds of things. Now, when it comes to housing, he's focused on affordable housing. In The State of the State, there's 47 cities in the state of California of the 451 that are not in compliance with a housing element of their general plan. Uh, we had been in compliance with our, with our general plan or our housing element up till 2013. And then we were in the middle of a crisis, financial crisis. And if, if anybody's been following our updates to general plan and housing element, it's cost us upwards of a half a million dollars to do that. So it was a pretty penny to get this done. And you have to do it a certain way through, uh, a very reputable firm. We use MIG. And we are in the process of finishing our housing plan. So I wasn't too worried about being called out by the governor because I know we'll be in compliance very soon, meaning that we just finished some of the public process. We're finishing all the SEQA documents, and it should be in front of the city council. We're hoping August or September for a final approval. At the same time, the general plan will be finishing not far behind that, and we'll be in full compliance. This is housing cycle five or six? Yeah. So we're out of compliance on one of them. So what the governor had done was when he meant, said- when he meant, said this, because he's already sued the city of Huntington Beach, and he called out a city of Montebello, there was a little bit backlash from some of the lobbying groups such as the California League of Cities, saying, "I don't think every city should be lumped into one." So, he did something that I was very impressed with. He called all the city mayors that were out of compliance together for a roundtable discussion. And I immediately jumped on that RSVP. The city manager and I went down to Long Beach this morning, and we, um, were able to meet, and seventeen mayors showed up, including myself. And we were given a platform, after the governor did a little opening, to actually speak one-on-one with him and HCD staff, Housing and Community Development Department. I was able to tell the story of Desert Hot Springs, that we'll be in compliance very soon, that we have twenty-two square miles, that a third of our city is developed, a third of it's in multi-species habitat, and a third's undeveloped. And that we are holding major numbers for the RENA here in Desert Hot Springs, which is unequitable throughout the Coachella Valley and the state. He took a lot of notes. He is proposing over three-quarters of a billion dollars in housing funding in the next budget cycle. And I asked, "Well, how can we get our piece?" If you want us to build housing, affordable housing, then you need to give our developers incentives to do that, 'cause an affordable house in Desert Hot Springs is a single-family dwelling. People that don't wanna rent and lease anymore, and they wanna buy a house from two-hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That's affordable to me. That's my opinion. We still have to wait and see what he says is affordable. We still have to wait to see what his plan is going to be. But it at least gave us an opportunity, and there was three other cities that were in the same boat as us, that had different issues, such as voters had to vote their housing plan in and have denied it twice. So, how could they be in compliance? They're being sued, but how can they get in compliance because the voters won't vote for it? So, there was, there was, I think he really understood at that point that you can't lump forty-seven cities together. It's different. And then, we were able to meet with our Housing and Community Development Director Specialist who handles our city and makes sure we're in compliance. And we were given some information. Some of the questions the city manager had was, "How do we deal with these RENA numbers?" And as Mr. Betts said, who goes down to SCAG, which is the regional area for us down here, the numbers are given to them, and then they have to distribute them. The numbers are set pretty much in stone by the state, and it's gonna be even higher because of what the governor's doing. He's, he's, he's wanting to build almost four times the amount of housing that is, is being required now. That's gonna put a strain on us. But what was impressive about today was there was an opportunity for a roundtable discussion, and he promised more to come. So, if I was able to say anything that made a little bit of an impact, I'm hoping that that did. And I know there's good work being done in SCAG by our, our representatives down there, and I hope they continue to do that, because equitable is what's important for us. The problem we have is the formula that's there today, and how do we combat that in the future? So, the discussion started. Um, there was a media press conference about it with the LA News, a lot of LA News people there. So, uh, I think there's a lot of focus on housing, and the governor's not gonna go away on this. This is one of his platforms. So, I always work, when I represent our city, as a partner and not my political stance. So, I went down there to partner with the state of California to make sure that our voice was heard and they understood who we are as a small city. And I think it was heard today, so. With that said, I'm gonna end on that note. Is there anything that I missed, Mr. City Manager, about today that you think would be important?
We do have, in cycle six, there is gonna be a window to allow us to do, uh, some adjustment again to those RENA numbers. And so, we're, we're on top of that. Um, we have some things that we still have to submit to the state. And I know that Rebecca's, uh, from our, my discussions with her, our Community Development Director, she's on top of it as well as MIG. And the state, I think it's important, too, that, uh, the state was very pleased with the fact that we're using MIG, because they are one of the few companies that they feel very comfortable with in this process, and they've done a good job with other cities in the past.
Oh, and I just had one thing. His threatening of lawsuits to cities, that he basically said, "Look, I, I made it as a general statement. We did sue Huntington Beach, but we're not here to sue. We're here to help, and that's the reason we're here today." And I, I did believe that when I left. I, obviously, with us being almost in compliance, they're not gonna sue our city, but there's other cities that do need help there, and I believe he did listen to them. Alright. Um, with that, we're moving to public hearings. Item number five, an ordinance to amend the city zoning map for the Palm McClare Group, a project located at the southwest corner of Palm Drive and Claire Avenue, APN 657-050-003. Our Community Development Director, she's off today, and I believe that's gonna be Scott Taschner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. Item five is on the agenda tonight to amend the city council, uh, the city's official zoning land use map, uh, to reflect, uh, the change in land use designation that was approved, uh, by the city council back in December for the Palm-Clare Mixed Use, uh, project at Palm Drive and Claire Avenue. Uh, no changes are proposed from what the council approved, and staff is awaiting the submittal of the architectural and site development applications for the project site. That said, this is a recommendation to approve, uh, one, an exemption to SEQA pursuant to section fifteen oh six one B three, a general rule. And two, to introduce, uh, for first reading, uh, an ordinance of the city council amending the city zoning map to reflect a change in land use designation from RR to CN for APN 657-050-003 for the Palm-Clare Group Project. Uh, that concludes staff's report. If you were available, if you have any questions.
This time of the year, taking questions to staff from city council. Is there any questions? See, nobody in the queue. We'll open up the public hearing at this time and take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant here tonight? Please state your name and begin your comments.
Or let's take testimony from the applicant. And, uh, frankly, the staff has handled with my land planner everything that we think had to be handled, so we're here to, if there's any opposition, to discuss it.
We'll give you an opportunity to come back up if there is any opposition for your rebuttal, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Who'll take, uh, testimony in favor of this project? Anybody that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone that'd like to speak opposed to this project? Anybody that's in neutral position would like to just make a general comment about the project? Well, this gives you time, Mr. Applicant, if you'd like to rebut all that information. No? Okay. And we'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll go to city council discussion. Is there any more comments from city council? See, none. I'll accept the motion.
I move we approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously, and this is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council amending the city zoning map to reflect a change in land use designation from RR Rural Residential to CN Commercial Neighborhood, um, for the Palm-Clare Group Project located at the southwest corner of Palm Drive and Claire Avenue for APN number six-five-seven-oh-five-zero-oh-oh-three. The ordinance will return at the next council meeting for second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. And, uh, that said, we'll move on to item number six, an ordinance related to pushcart vendors, foot vendors, and peddlers. Our city attorney, Ms. Marry.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item you have before you this evening is an ordinance, um, to basically, uh, comply with SB nine-four-six, which was a new senate bill that recently was passed, which limits the ability of local governments, including, um, Desert Hot Springs, which is a charter city, uh, to regulate sidewalk vending, is except, pretty much is outlined in the bill. And, uh, the ordinance that you have is a, pretty much a comprehensive statutory scheme, which, um, which regulates sidewalk vendors. It also includes a permitting process, uh, certain distance requirements and other kinds of requirements, um, that are related to health, safety, and welfare, and time, place, and manner in which the, uh, vendors can actually be on the sidewalk, uh, vending their product, selling their products. And it also provides for due process and an appeals process. Um, I'm happy to go through the ordinance, should the city council like. I, I'm happy to do that, or I will, uh, go ahead and, and assume that everybody's had a chance to kind of look at it. The one thing that I did wanna mention is on, uh, page forty-five of your packet, I have one edit. And in kind of discussing this with, a little further with, uh, staff, I'd like to make one deletion, which is, um, five-point-two-eight-point-zero-eight-five-A-four. It says, "No sidewalk vendor may operate within thirty feet of any sidewalk curb or edge of pavement." And in discussing this with staff, I think the intent was good. We wanted to kind of, uh, limit things in terms of line of sight, making sure everything was safe. But in actuality, I think it would probably end up prohibiting all sidewalk vendors in the city, so kind of, uh, it, it wouldn't allow any, anything that this ordinance is trying to allow. So, uh, with that, I would recommend deleting that one subsection. Uh, happy to answer any questions or go any, into, uh, further detail with respect to any item in this ordinance, uh, as council deems fit.
Thank you very much. I have three council member comments. We'll entertain questions to staff at this time. Mr. Betts?
I've got comments, um, maybe a couple of questions. Um, so, this is, uh, the state legislature deciding they like, uh, to tell cities how to operate and what they think is best, and no longer leaving it up to cities to decide these matters. Um, in a worst-case scenario, you could have, um, a, um, say, a Mexican restaurant in town that, you know, brick and mortar building, paying their taxes, doing everything proper, and somebody could go set up right out in front of them, selling tacos, taco stand, burrito stand. So, why go into the restaurant when you can go here? Um, at our parks, we have Little League, makes a good bit of their money off of the Little League concession, and you could have a street vendor who goes up and sets up a pushcart, selling everything that Little League does, but either undercutting them or something else. And then, you've got, um, issues where public right-of-way is impeded. So, you're gonna have some enforcement mechanisms here, uh, that we're gonna have to put in place and decide what it is. Are they allowed to, um, put a pushcart in? Um, are they allowed to put up these pop-up stands? Um, and, and so, this isn't gonna be the end of this. This is gonna be a mess for staff if this takes hold and becomes more popular. Um, one of the regulations is that you can't set up a permanent, like, mini-market on a curb in a residential neighborhood, a fixed stationary one. You have to move it. So, you could make a fixed mini-market stand, and if it's on wheels, and just keep moving it back and forth from one house to the next, or, you know, up and down the street, there's ways to get around this. It's just not very well thought out. And I understand the intention behind it. There's a bunch of people that make their living off of pushcarts, and their, the legislature felt that they should be able to, uh, be able to pry their wares and make some money. So, if anybody wants to go into business doing, uh, street vending, you got a great opportunity here to unleash an army of street vendors, but it's gonna cause some problems for the city. So, my suggestion would be as a staff take a, um, you know, this is something we have to do, but that staff take a look at the potential problems that come along within the, what's allowed by the state legislature to figure out how to protect us, 'cause people need to be able to go about their business. And we certainly should put in, the number one thing I think we should do is we need to, staff needs to come back with some exclusive agreements. Obviously, one is for the Little League at Wardman Park, where they would be the exclusive vendor at the Little League, and that no pushcarts in that case, or no vendors will be allowed in Wardman Park. And I think my understanding is that the, the legislation allows for that. And then, down where we have other parks and we don't have exclusive vendors, that we seek somebody, either that, some type of somebody, that can be an umbrella organization to provide that type of exclusive, like for AYSO or whoever else is down there, uh, so that they aren't, um, running into competition on something that's so vital to the, to the youth groups to, to fund themselves.
Can we talk about that for a minute? Because the city manager and I had a discussion about that today. Uh, wasn't there some sort of protection here for organizations?
There is.
If you look at subsection H, it says exactly, "A sidewalk vendor is prohibited from operating within five hundred feet of a permitted certified farmer's market, permitted swatment, or any area subject to a temporary use permit for the duration of the permit."
Well, what you need to do is, on, on what I'm talking about for the, the concessions, is I think you have to go take a formal step, if I read the legislation correctly, take the formal step of entering into a exclusive vending agreement with the parties for each park.
Of, of course. And if you take a look at J?
That's a J, yeah.
"Stationary sidewalk vendors shall not sell food or merchandise or engage in any sidewalk vending activities, one, at any park where the city has assigned, has signed an agreement for concessions that exclusively permits the sale of food or merchandise by a concessionaire, or on sidewalks directly adjacent or within residential areas." So, J one, I think, uh, would address your concern. So, um...
Except we don't have anybody named.
No, because this is an ordinance...
I got it. So, I understand what I'm saying. My next step, I understand this one can't, you can't go name Little League and here somebody else. But the next step, staff needs to come back with us and say, "Okay, now that you've put this ordinance in place, now here's what we're recommending for an exclusive agreement. The easy one is Wardman Park and Little League Snack Shack."
Understood.
And, uh, otherwise, or you just do nothing, and somebody go up there and, you know, maybe I'll go make some extra money and undercut the sales of the Little League. That'll be real popular, election time. Uh, anyhow, so that's my suggestion.
Alright, uh, Mr. Gardner?
Thank you. Um, I really like this. Um, a good vibrant street sidewalk scene is something any city needs and can benefit from, and we have none right now. And granted, we are a small city, and I don't anticipate armies and squads of small vendors roaming up and down the streets. We just don't have the population for it, or the, or the basis for it. But I can see a handful of them out there, and I think this is a good start to, to get there. Um, as we just pointed out, um, it will not interfere with the Little League or the park. There's all kinds of restrictions in there for that. Uh, and if the, uh, Little League organization signs an exclusive agreement for whoever's going to operate their snack shack, then this person is not going to, this ordinance will not, uh, impact them, because nobody will be able to get up there to do that. Um, I'm glad to see staff, uh, is recommending that we delete that section, subsection four, uh, just because we, uh, it does, it completely eliminates how it would operate. You can't have a sidewalk vendor that is prohibited from operating within thirty feet of a sidewalk. It doesn't work. Um, there are a couple of other things I would like to see, um, changed in here. Um, we do have a section there that stops them at, uh, at Two Bunch Palms from going any further south on Palm, uh, with the incoming library, with the WIC office down there, with the incoming new grocery store, and the sidewalk that will extend past Starbucks. When that is all built, I would like to see that zone extended down as far as Park Drive, uh, and then past Park Drive. We would prohibit them from, from working any further south from there. And I would also like to suggest we change subsections two and three to thirty feet, not fifty feet. We take fifty feet from the senior center, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna help anybody from the senior center that may wanna pick up something, uh, from a, from a, from a cart. And, uh, that puts them clear back out here. So, if we put it to thirty feet, uh, we're in a much better situation for that, and it's much more viable for those folks there. But, that being said, um, this is a step towards making our downtown lively and vibrant and walkable with, uh, with events and people, and, uh, it brings people out. Eventually, I would, I'm, I'm hoping we can get to addressing food trucks. I know they don't go into this ordinance, but bringing food trucks into town and, uh, and going that route, need, need to take a look at that as well. But, uh, I would, uh, I will be moving to make those, uh, those, those three changes. Uh, the one mentioned by the city attorney and the other two, uh, one becomes kind to go with this, and, uh, I would hope that, uh, the rest of the council will, uh, will support me on that.
Ms. Vala?
So, the, I, I don't really see an issue with, with street vending. I, I think it's kind of, uh, maybe a less popular viewpoint, but I, I, I tend to agree with the state in that it's aimed to, uh, provide extra income for low-income residents and low-income communities. And, you know, California is a very expensive state to live in, and sometimes people need to offset some of their income from work and sell something on the side of the street, whether it be oranges, which I see here in Desert Hot Springs, or strawberries, or mangoes, or chopped up fruit. That's mainly what I see. Um, I don't have an issue with people doing that if that's helping them put food on the table for their children. I mean, people have to do what they have to do to help their family survive. And so, I, I actually feel like, um, this whole pulling a business permit for it, I feel like, I'm okay with having some sort of permit. I'm not sure that I necessarily think that a business permit, which is a lot more of a complicated process, is the right thing for it. It's not really like it's a traditional storefront. It's just somebody kind of pulling over and, you know, selling some things out of a pop-up stand, or their car, or their truck, or whatever it may be. Um, so, I don't know if maybe we could create an, an easier type of, of license for this particular purpose, so that they don't actually have to go through the county process and establishing, like, a real legal business name and opening, like, a real, uh, like, business account that's linked to this business name. It just kind of seems like it's a little, it starts to get a little complicated for selling something, selling like a few oranges here and there. Um, so, I would just kind of like to see maybe, like, if we could create, like, a different process for people that are doing process for people that are doing this in, in particular. I do agree with setting, like, certain regulations as to, like, where people can and can't go depending on, you know, how congested those certain streets are and whether or not people pulling over could cause traffic accidents. I'm, I'm all for that, and at the time of, you know, getting that little application, which should be in English and in Spanish, you know, that people get a map and say, okay, you can't go here, here, and here, anywhere else, you know, as long as you follow these guidelines, you know, go do your thing. But I, I'm in, I'm in support of your suggestion in terms of doing the 30 feet. I will say, I'm not sure if this applies to the, to, this is going to be a throwback for me, but I don't know if this applies to the ice cream man that pushes the little ice cream cart. I, I'm okay with the ice cream man pushing the ice cream cart, sitting outside of school waiting for the kids to come out, because I will tell you, that was, like, my favorite thing after school, and it's the, the easiest way to get your parents to get you ice cream. So I'm just going to advocate for all those students out there that wait for the darn ice cream man after school. So I am, I, I would save even less than 30 feet for the darn ice cream man. So I, I don't know. It's just, it's just kind of the way I see it. I, I know that sometimes it's, it's not as visually aesthetic to see this, but the way I see it is, is just, I never see wealthy people doing this. It's people that are scraping by trying to make a living, and I say, I'd rather you do, do that than, you know, doing something that's criminal. So that, that's all I have to say.
If, if I could answer a quick question that you brought up, Ms. Vala, it, it does specifically say that you cannot vend to a car. So we're not going to see people driving up and vending, they, they're prohibited from vending over and vending to a car. So if they're, they're not going to pull up to a car and, and go out and give them the ice cream or the oranges or whatever. So that, that provision is in there as well as, um, come on.
Yeah, I, I know that. They're not going to, they're not going to pull up to your window, but I was just saying, like, how people, my, my point of saying that was just that I understand putting in regulations in place to where, you know, maybe you can't go to some of the busiest intersections because people pulling over to buy something could cause an accident.
Then the, and, and the application process too is not a full-fledged business license. If you look, it's, it's, it's a simple permit with the name, address, phone number, days they plan to operate, locations they plan to operate, and description of what they're going to sell. So it's a very simple application.
I did see that, but I also saw this requirement that they must pull, like, this, some, a few things with the state. So my, my whole thing was just, I don't know what exactly, as a city, what our business license process entails. From my understanding, you do need, like, what is it, like, a fictitious name, whatever, whatever, when you open up a business and you want to pull a permit to operate. At least that's how my stepdad has pulled permits, but I don't know if maybe our process is different. My whole point was just, if, if that is what our city process looks like, like what the requirements are, then I would like to see some, a more simplified version if that's what our city process looks like. I don't know what our city business policy license looks like.
All right, I'm going to make some comments, and I'll go back into round two. People still in the queue. If you're already done, please take your name out of the queue. I, I support this ordinance. I support a business license process, and the reason I do that is I understand there are people out there that do this to supplement some income, but I've also watched, when my kids are in school, a van pull up and pull out two van, vendor carts and drop off two people to work for them, and they're making money, and they're not paying taxes, and they're not paying permits and business licenses here in our community. And that's not fair to the brick and mortar businesses that pay as much as they do to have a business in our community, pay their taxes, pay their permits, have the same type of product in there. I'm not against the push carts. I love the ice cream truck when it comes down my street, and so do my kids. But the process to do it has to happen, and the state is basically saying, yes, there needs to be a process, allow these vendors to be able to do their business, but let's do it correctly and let's do it safely. Food needs to be purchased correctly, it needs to be prepared correctly because people can get sick. That's what it comes down to. And what we, what we're trying to avoid these days is, I'm watching a handicapped person try to get to a bus stop the other day, and I have these phone vendors that have popped up tents on the sidewalks and are giving away free phones from the government. That's not fair to the handicapped person trying to get around this pop-up tent to the bus stop. So the reason that we're supporting push carts is because you're going to push your business along the sidewalk or wherever it is and get, get away from this. This, this takes that away, correct? They can't just pop up on the sidewalk and put a pop-up tent and a table and have a business on the sidewalk.
Has to be mobile.
Has to be mobile. So I'm supportive of this. I think we're all pretty much on the same page here with some, some tweaks to it, but for the most part, I think it's a good step towards making sure. I, I asked a question about Little League and AYSO and General American and any other organizations that use our parks and our concession stands and make sure they're protected because these organizations fight every year, push vendors and ice cream vendors just showing up in the park while they're trying to make a buck. I mean, Little League itself, they, they have close to 300 to 400 kids play Little League each year, and, and their, their snack bar maybe makes $10,000 a year, and most of it goes back into supplying it, but they make a few thousand dollars off it, and it helps every kid get, get to play Little League. So the same issue with AYSO and General American football. So what we're going to do is put protections in for them. It looks like it's in there, but if we need to get an actual contract, let's make sure we have those. I know most of those organizations worked through contracts years ago with us. So whatever we got to do here, Mr. Betts, you have more comments?
Just in response to some of this, the legislature did put in some measures, like, for example, the exclusive agreement at the park because they foresee that this could cause some difficulties. And while I appreciate that, you know, I don't mind going buying something from somebody who's, you know, a street vendor, the point that proliferates so much that it becomes a problem that you're trying to walk down a sidewalk and tripping over all the street vendors, well, then you got a problem. And then you got a problem with enforcement where we can say, don't block the right-of-way, but how many times has our staff been down to that bus stop down there at Stater's? And, I mean, these guys set up blocking right on the sidewalk, and then no access for anybody in a handicap wheelchair to go into that bus because they're on both sides of the thing. They were tying their, their units to it, so. And there was repeated efforts just on that very minimal situation. Now you imagine when people competing for corners, street corners, so you just can't run this, you know, just throw open the, the floodgates to, you have to be able to regulate this. And the mayor's point on, you know, what these brick and mortar stores go through. This is, you know, every phone that's sold is competition for a cellphone. Every other lick, knickknack is, that's sold through a street vendor is without overhead is, is competition for the local knickknack store. And I'm sure glad we have knickknacks in this world, so it makes it easy to identify products. But if we're going to relax the standards, these very basic business license standards for street vendors, then I'm sure every brick and mortar store out there would love to have the same consideration. So let's just do away with all, you know, I'm not trying to sound snippety here, but we've got to show some sympathy to-
You're raising an argument that I didn't make-
Okay.
And defeating that argument that I didn't make.
Okay, well, I'm trying my best. I didn't think I was going to sway you on this one. Anyhow, I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, I, and, and this is something that we have to support because the state legislature has said, hi, do this. And so this is really our opportunity to mitigate some of the impacts that this could have on the community and provide whatever regulation that the legislature allowed. And Los Angeles got out ahead of this, what, three, four months ago, and to do what they could, and, you know, they've got 10,000 unregulated street vendors already and have had a problem with it for years. And so anyhow, so, all right, that's, I think-
I just have a, a question for staff. So when we said sidewalk vendors, I noticed, I heard a few things on the council, but I just wanted to make sure that, that still does allow for the people, like, that don't have a push cart but that are selling things, and they put up, like, a temporary little umbrella thing that's still allowed? Just making sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not just push carts, umbrellas, pop-up tents, that's, they'll be able to move it.
Yeah, it, it's primarily, they have to be mobile. It has, it can't, they cannot be permanent in any way.
Yeah, exactly.
So they cannot be, you know, you, you can't, they, they can't, you know-
Build a structure.
Yeah, they can't build a structure out there or anything like that. It's, the entire intent is, is kind of what the council is talking about, is to allow for, you know, people to sell their goods, but they need to be mobile. They can't, you know, it's, cannot be a permanent-
Yeah, like, they could get up and move at any time.
So if they back their truck into the State of Brothers parking lot and open up a store, they still have to be permitted to do that?
Correct, you still need a business license.
And then they would need to have permission from the property owner to sit there.
The property owner, and in addition, they also have to file something, I think, with the state as well.
They can't put a pop-up tent and block the, the sidewalk.
They can't block the sidewalk, but they can put up the pop-up tent right where it's at now.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay with that, to be honest, but that's just my personal opinion.
I know, it's your personal opinion. My personal opinion is ridiculous when the handicapped and people trying to utilize our bus stops can't get to them because street vendors want to sit there and, and give away free phones without licensing.
They can't impede access to that bus stop.
They are, though.
But I think with this, they won't be able to-
Sunline was down there, and the guy's moved. Now I called Sunline, and they sent their operations manager out there to take a look, and they back away. But it was impossible to even get on the bus for a regular person.
It was. So anyways, it's just frustrating to me, but either way, you have more comments?
And then just maybe when we have our, our meeting, I'd like to know a little bit more about what our city, like, license process permit looks like, and then also if we have the applications in, in Spanish.
Ms. Pye? Ms. Pye?
And Chinese, as Russ mentioned.
I didn't know if I, if I enunciated.
No, I was waiting for the finish.
Russ was saying, and Chinese, so I said, I am Chinese.
I'll translate it for her, it's okay.
With respect to Little League and soccer, Mr. Betts, I don't agree with putting in their Little League and soccer. We have a football team that's going to end up coming here.
I didn't, I didn't say put Little League or soccer in here. I said they need to come through with an exclusive agreement for each park, whichever- whichever organization it happens to be. I didn't say to put Little League or soccer in. I'm just saying the park, specific to the park, we're allowed to do an exclusive agreement for that park. So whoever it happens to be, and, you know, the mayor and I and everybody else was here and this county, you were, when we went through those, who gets the agreement? So that's a sticky wicket. Staff will have to work out. All I'm saying is, we should, the Little League one's easy, but I'm not saying specifically Little League. I'm saying the park, exclusive to the park.
I got you now, I got you.
Thanks.
With respect to the 50 feet beyond, isn't that what the state is requesting? Where he had spoke about having it 30 feet, but aren't they requesting 50?
I don't believe this, the state has actually mentioned the feet requirements. I'll take a quick look at SB 946, but these requirements actually came from our workings with code enforcement staff. So I don't think that the state mentioned any kind of distance requirements. It left it up to the cities.
Okay.
I'll, I'll double check, though, while you discuss. I'll just quickly double check it.
And that, that's correct because we were trying to attempt to alleviate having these phone vendors where they're at right now and some of the other issues we've had with some vendors that have continuously used resources in our city because of their shenanigans.
So with respect, because she got real loud about that ice cream.
I did.
If the school says it's okay, would that satisfy her comment?
The ordinance actually allow, it actually would allow for exactly what Councilmember Zavala is, is so passionate about.
With the 30 feet, but-
With the 30 feet.
Yeah. But what I was saying was, if it was closer, I mean, that would be okay, because I, I don't, I mean, I don't remember how many feet it was precisely, but-
Probably run 30 feet for ice cream.
But if the-
Okay, then that's good. 30 feet, I like the 30 feet, Gary.
And I, I quickly just double checked in state law on your packet pages, 27 to maybe about 32. The, the state does not specifically provide for actual distance requirements, so the 50 feet is not in here.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing this time. Take testimony in favor of this ordinance. Anyone? Or take testimony in opposition? Take testimony, anybody in neutral position who'd like to make a comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing this time. Any more city council discussion?
Just, I'm a dessert person. I think everybody here knows that.
You and I both.
Boss Sunday after the meeting.
Mr. Gardner, you have a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the ordinance with a couple of changes here. First one is to delete section 5.28.085A sub 4, which the city attorney had already mentioned. I'd also like to change subsection 5 to the distance between Park Drive and Camino Aventura, which then extends the zone that they're permitted to from Two Bunch Palms further south to Park Drive, which captures the Vons and Kmart centers and the WIC office, the new library and the food, the new food now. And then I'd like to change subs two and three to 30 feet, not 50 feet, so.
All right, motion's been made with the amendments. We'll wait for it to come up on the screen, and then he'll need a second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What's your thinking on the 30 feet?
Me?
Yeah. You, you favor relaxing that further?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to let it go for now as long as everyone's permitted. That's all that matters to me if, you know, it, it sounds like the state laws trumped a lot of our decision-making when it comes to this, so I'm, I'm going to let it go as long as they're permitted. I think that's our biggest enforcement.
So they got to go through the same permit process?
Absolutely.
You didn't change that?
No.
Okay, I'll follow your lead on this one, then.
And looking at the motion on here, the, the distance would be Camino, Park Drive to Camino Aventura. Or-
Two Bunch Palms.
Two Bunch Palms to Park Drive. And so then the, the way the ordinance reads, the prohibited section would stand from Park Drive to Camino Aventura.
Did you capture that?
Noted.
It doesn't read that same, but he's captured your-
Right, it'll be in the minutes more accurately.
All right, thank you.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is a first reading as amended of an ordinance of the city council, amending chapter 5.28, push cart vendors, foot vendors, and peddlers of Title V, business licenses and regulations, and section 10.16.090, parking by peddlers and vendors, permits of chapter 10.16, stopping, standing, and parking of Title X, vehicles and traffic of the Desert Hot Springs municipal code. The ordinance will return at the next council meeting for second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. We'll move on to administrative items. Number seven, approval of the 2018-19 budgetary adjustments for revenues, expenditures, and transfers for the fiscal year ending Jan, June 30, 19. Financial Director Linda Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Mattis. Jeffrey Buckheim, the finance manager, will be giving this presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, council members and city staff. I'm Jeffrey Buckheim, financial, financial manager. Before you are the mid-year adjustments to the fiscal year 18-19 budgets. The, the adjustments are made for various reasons, such as changes in revenues and expenditures throughout the year that, based on actual adjustments for increased costs in day-to-day operations or general emergency repairs and any new equipment purchases. The consolidated general fund revenue adjustments include, in the amount of $984,689, include increases in property taxes, which part of it includes due to, partially due to sale of former redevelopment agency property, also increases in TOT and cannabis taxes as well as other revenues. And as well, it also includes decreases in certain, decreases in certain permitting fees that would, due to, like, fewer developments or new developments not coming on, is coming online as quickly as, as we had anticipated. The increased, the general, consolidated general fund is, expenditures are increasing by 400, over 481,000. These are for additional contract expenses, repairs, and maintenance as well as equipment. Another increase is, is also the set aside of the fund balance to make amendments for the funds transferred to the marijuana reserve in the amount of $459,597. These changes in the consolidated general fund amount to over $44,000 net gain to the consolidated general fund's fund balance. There are also restricted funds, there are some changes for, some restricted funds for equipment repairs and supplies in the amount of $22,700. So if anybody has any questions?
Waiting for the screen to come back up here. We'll open public comments on this first. Anybody would like to speak on this item? See, now we'll move to council member comments. Mr. Betts?
I probably would have done well to ask you this ahead of time, so you had the number, but do we have the balances on the Marijuana Reserve and our other reserves?
The Marijuana Reserve will be close to $1.5 million after we move the funds for this fiscal year.
And do we have a dedicated reserve, a regular reserve fund?
We have a dedicated reserve fund for the marijuana, and then there is the reserves for the general funds.
Okay, and what are those at?
The 1.5 million for marijuana will be after we transfer for this year, and I believe the general fund, we're expecting close to, what was it, 8 million?
That would be, it would be close to, it'd probably be close to $8.6 million at the end of this fiscal year, but there will be reserves, and we will have to get you that exact number.
The what?
There will be reserves as a part of that 8 million dollars. They are representative of reserves, which is a set aside, and we will get you that number.
Okay, we don't have a formal fund like we do for the marijuana, though, right?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Oh, one more thing, sorry. Go ahead. No, no, never mind. I'll leave it go as minor, sorry.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, two quick questions. The, on the slides there, the increased consolidated general fund revenue adjustments, excuse me, the special revenue, is that, what is included in the special revenue?
Oops. The special revenue is, actually, the special revenue actually is what we're considering, the dispenser and cultivation cannabis taxes.
Okay, and that's just all that's in that? So that's just lumped together both the cultivators and the retail outlets?
Yes.
For that. Second question was, on the grading permits and engineering fees, those are coming in less than what we expected? $70,000 and $174,000?
Yes, they are.
Less than what we had anticipated that they come in? Any...
At this time of year, the projects may have not moved along as quickly as we thought, so at this point of year, this may come in later on, but this is what we're anticipating at this point.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Pye?
Back to Councilman Betts' question. The increase in Marijuana reserves, that's part of the general fund balance, correct? This is on...
Yes, that goes to, that'll go to part of the general fund balance, and then 25% of all the cannabis taxes will then be transferred at the end of the fiscal year to the Marijuana Reserve.
So the 25 is not in this figure?
No, it would be, the 25 would actually be the $459,000, that's...
Plus the other 400.
Plus the other 400, so...
We're anticipating to transfer close to $808,000 at the end of the year to Fund 212, which is a part of your consolidated general fund, but it is a separate fund segregated for the Marijuana Reserve.
Okay, but what I'm trying to find out is this reserve that's here, 459 plus, that's not the 20, that's not part of the 25%?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Okay, let me go a little further. Further down, we're taking 22,000, a little more than 22,000, from the reserve.
From the general fund reserve, yes. You're talking about in another item coming forward?
Right, on the playground. My understanding is the 25, sure, the 25 is separate, but we're not supposed to be touching the 25 right now.
You won't be touching that 25. We actually moved that money from Fund 001, which is the general fund, to Fund 212. We don't use any expenses or apply any expenses to that particular fund. It would have to come before the city council for review and approval.
Okay, let me see if I can do this real simple.
But, but when you're talking about the entire general fund, it's made up of four different funds. The general fund, the Marijuana Reserve Fund, Fund 211, which is your health and wellness, and there's a much smaller fund, it's 245, and then a much smaller fund, which is 246.
Okay, let me see if I can do this simple.
I get what you're saying.
25% of the reserve is not supposed to be part of anything we're doing. 25% of the reserve, unless it comes to the city council, unless you're telling me it's coming now.
It's coming to be increased to actually move the money in there. We're asking you to...
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Looking at page 74. Okay, it has the 459,000 plus there. You told me part of that is the 25%.
There are two separate reserves, okay? The Marijuana Reserve, which is included in the general fund, is totally separated. If we were going to use that money, we would have to come back to you. So I'll give you an example. If there is approximately $8.9 million at the end of this fiscal year, 1.5 of that million dollars would be your Marijuana Reserve. You could not expend that money without coming back to you to expend it. But there is other general fund, which is still there and available for the city council to use going forward, as long as they approve it.
Okay. 459,000, period, okay?
Where are you getting that number?
On page 74.
So the 459,000, so we've originally budgeted in the, in the, the adopted budget was a little over, a little over $300,000 to be transferred to the Marijuana Reserve. This 459,000, it takes, is, takes, will increase that to the 808,000 that we're anticipating, which we, the 808,000 will, is what we're anticipating to be 25% of the revenues of the cannabis taxes for this fiscal year. So what we're doing with that 459,000 is we're setting that aside of general fund revenues, saying that this 459,000 needs to be included to what we already budgeted to go to the Marijuana Reserve, which is a separate fund.
So you're going to put that money into...
That's, that's what we're, yeah, so this is a change so that we can, we can reflect the true 25% of the estimated cannabis revenues to be transferred into the Marijuana Reserve.
So there's a fund set up with a number that says Marijuana Reserves can't be used unless city council votes on it.
So if I do minus, minus this from this, that'll give me this.
459,000 increase to the...
I mean, give me this.
Tell me what page this number is. Why does it say packet page 74 on yours but not mine?
Mine doesn't have the same 74 as yours does. I'm looking over your shoulder.
Oh, yeah, and I couldn't find. Okay.
So if we can get on the same page as she's on, maybe the question could be answered. So I'm trying to figure out what page...
That would be for the next item, which is the CDB Mission Springs Park Project.
But this page, I have 76.
No, it's not the next item. I don't, again, don't know which...
Okay, let's do it this way. First page of the staff report. And the next page of the staff report.
Go back up?
Yeah, right there.
Right here. All right, so go to the staff report, which is the first page, it says packet page 55 at the top, and if you go to the next page, that's what she's referring to. At the bottom of the page, there's a number that says increase to Marijuana Reserve, 459,597. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. So now, can you ask the question again, so maybe they could understand it a little better, now that they're on the same page?
Okay. Now I gotta find the page.
Oh, here we go, okay.
Right there.
Okay, am I doing this wrong? Is the first, let's do it this way. First, first figure, the 504, no, it can't be.
First figure, 964?
If I subtract, no, if I subtract the 503 from the 459, I come up with 44,000.
Yes, that is, that 44,000 is like the net gain to the fund balance. That differences the, the actual revenues over actual expenditures, which is the 503, 683, less the 459 and 557, which is what we're proposing to increase in the budget that goes to the Marijuana Reserve. What's left over is the 44,086.
Okay, that's, and that's my question. The 459 has the 25% reserve in it?
The 459 is part of the 25% reserve.
Okay, then we have 44,000.
And then we just, we have 44,000 left over that goes to increases the, the general fund fund balance.
So when we go into the playground, and one of them we're going to take from the general fund is 22,000 something, we're taking it from the 44?
Essentially, yes, but you could be taking it from other fund balances on hand right now as well, because this is only taking in consideration a snapshot in time of revenues that we're increasing versus expenditures we're increasing.
Okay, but if you have the 25 in that 459, that 459 is affecting the 44?
That's correct. The staff report was done before the other CDBG project came forward. But yes, that's correct.
And then, point in time, and you go to the 22, you're taking that 25%, you're considering that 25%?
20, I'm confused with the 25%.
She, I think she's asking, are you taking the 22,000 or the 22,000 from the 25% of Marijuana?
No, it's...
No, no, it's, no.
Where are you taking the 22% when we get to that report? Obviously, we're just gonna skip ahead a little bit so we can get her question answered.
Well, you could say you're taking it from the 44,806.
Which is regular reserves, it's not part of the Marijuana reserves? Does that make more sense? Or does it confuse you even more? Because I'm confused. But I think what they're saying is there's 8.6 million dollars in reserves that we can take from. They're not taking one, because the ordinance is set up that one point, whatever's in the reserves from 25% can't be taken from unless it's approved by the city council.
Okay, now I can get it. When you go to that other item, you're not talking about this 25, okay?
No, no, ma'am.
Got you. I just want to make sure.
No, that's fine.
And we're, I don't have any other questions. I've done public comments. I'll entertain a motion. There's motion, accept staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you push the button? You gotta return to your meeting?
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I had number eight, which is a CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, Mission Springs Park Improvement Project 2017-05, Notice of Completion and Change Order. Public Works Director Daniel Pores.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The CDBG Mission Springs Park Improvement Project consisted of the purchase and installation of new playground equipment and various site improvements to help transition existing concrete pathways, curves and landscape and irrigation. The new playground equipment consisted of three various age playground structures and one swing set. They were installed around the existing playground structures, and there was ADA pathways, concrete pathways around these structures and rubberized surface. On August 21st, the city council authorized the city manager to execute a construction agreement between Desert Concepts and the city for the project in an amount of $265,883. During construction, there were various items that were required that were above and beyond the original scope of work. Those items included additional sidewalk and extension of curb section to meet the maximum grades allowed for ADA, and the construction of additional rubberized surface material around the playground to meet proper ADA accessibility throughout the playground area. In essence, the original design had two access points, a primary access point and a secondary access point. The secondary access point had a three-step, three steps down. When we went out in the field, we, the primary actually resulted in being the secondary, therefore, we eliminated the three steps and meandered the sidewalk around the playground equipment, which created additional concrete square footage and also curb. We did get a credit for not installing the actual steps, but we did have to increase the quantities of sidewalk. The meandering caused also an extension that we had to do additional rubberized surface to meet the existing rubberized surface with the old rubberized surface. The total resulted in two change orders totaling $51,848. The original contract amount was $265,883. With the change orders, it resulted in a total cost of $317,731. An additional, an addition of $29,000 from the Div Parkland Fund and $22,848 from the general fund will be needed to cover the additional cost. The work was officially completed on January 24th, 2019. The next steps in the process would be for the city to record notice of completion and release the final retention payment to the contractor. Staff is recommending that city council approve the work with the change orders in the amount of $51,848, accept the park improvements, and direct the city manager to file a notice of completion for the CDBG Mission Springs Park Improvement Project number 2017-05. The park draft notice of completion and some pictures are attached as exhibits. I'm not glad to answer any questions.
Open up for public comments. Anybody would like to speak on this item? Close public comments, council members? If nobody in the queue, I'll accept the motion.
Most approve the change order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, the pictures look fantastic. I haven't had a chance to visit the parks yet, but I'm really, really pleased with the outcome. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, I had number nine, which is Tedesco Park Playground ADA Improvement Project 2017-01, Notice of Completion. Mr. Pores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is almost the exact same project, but this is at Tedesco Park. The city also completed the installation of new playground equipment. It was three different playground structures and one swing set, all from different ages. That park project was complete under budget. There were no change orders for that project. The next step would be to file a notice of completion and file the retention for the contractor. Staff is recommending council approve the work, accept the park improvements, and direct the city manager to file notice of completion for project number 2017-01, CDBG Tedesco Park Improvement Project. That concludes my staff report. I'm not glad to answer any questions. There's also pictures and the draft.
The only question I had was, wasn't there supposed to be shade structures?
That's what I was about to ask.
There was shade structures. So we use CDBG funds where we purchase the shade structures. When we went out to actually bid, the shade structures resulted in way over budget. We had one shade structure, about $100,000 to install, and another one at 70. We did another bid, which resulted in 70 and 70 for the installation. We are still moving forward with the installation, just as a different phase of the project until we can secure the funding for that.
Okay.
And it'll still be for both, right?
That's correct. Yeah, we just need additional funding for that, that's all.
Open it up to public comments, anyone? Close public comments, Mr. Betts?
So we'll have shade structure in time for summer?
If we can find the money, we will, yeah. We do have them already purchased, so yes, we are trying to find the money.
Okay, and then the, I saw the beautiful new equipment that you put in. I didn't go look at the old section. I'd seen that a bunch of times. Did we fix some of the things that were wrong with that, like the mat and other stuff? Did we...
We did. Mission Springs got all-new rubberized surface. At Tedesco, we have not put rubberized surface, but it would be a touch-up. We did fix all of the various equipments. There was two steps that got replaced and a, like a bridge that wasn't complete.
So you went and...
We did.
Went in the new and spruced up...
We did spruce them up, and there's still more additional that are gonna happen to the old equipment to bring them up to the date, yeah.
Okay, and we had a problem with the water feature, not only with the water feature itself not working and being a problem. It worked for a little while, but also with some other complications with having that in the park.
We did.
Where are we at on that?
We are looking at different options. We've had a couple of proposals submitted, and they were far beyond what any budget we were expecting. So we are looking for maybe a simpler design of the water feature, or even turning it on with a more updated UV system. The problem was, it didn't have a circulating system which doesn't meet our current codes. So in order to turn it on, we would have to meet our current codes. The contractors, whenever they have their state license on the line, they would not do any improvements unless we bring up the actual water feature up to code, which would result in a brand-new pump system and filtration system.
And then, and we have some other issues with that regarding it turning into a public shower, right?
That's correct. So since there are filtration... So since there was filtration system, there was a health hazard where people were using it as a shower, and the water will end up downstream right at the playground.
So, you know, people ask us all the time why we don't have a water feature like Cathedral City does. Cathedral City's water feature is centrally located and can be easily monitored, it's not off a remote location in a park. I really want a water feature like that, but maybe rather than going and fixing up this one that has all these other issues, we look to see if there's somewhere else we can put one.
Maybe New City Hall.
Right, I would think right, right in front of City Hall would be perfect.
The Furby Water Feature is either operating or will be shortly.
That's correct.
So that will be active for the swim months and hopefully?
You know, we had a problem with that one kept getting too hot, right?
Yeah, we've resolved that.
Okay.
But the other one, quite frankly, I, I think we've hit a wall with that. It has created a public safety issue because of folks taking showers in it versus actually using it, children using it for what it's meant to be. And I think because of the cost and because of the location, it may not be the proper place for it at this point.
So I think we put on our wish list to figure out where we can put some kind of water feature, something akin to what Cathedral City has, but not dedicate any more energy effort or money into that one that we have there.
And you're talking about the fountain system down in the, right in front of City Hall at Cathedral City, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's very active, it's very well-used, but it's also, I mean, it couldn't be any more plain sight, so if there's any issues going on with, you know, somebody going up and trying to take, use it for a shower, hey, you know what, we got a shower for you, but this isn't it.
Certainly, yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I think you hit, touched on most of those because Tedesco is my neighborhood park. I walk through it every morning, and I've been watching this, and I, and I, I think it's great what everything that has happened. And you did say that the rubberized mats are still under, that, that was the one thing that I keep noticing has not been done there.
Right. And the water feature, so. There's a rock feature that we're gonna remove and install a new one, and the rubberized surface will be removed as well.
Okay, yeah. The only other concern I have with that park, and it has nothing to do with this, is it does seem to be a bit of a dumping ground for people's old TVs and glassware and things like that, and, and we do have great staff cleaning that up, and as well as the Desert Valley Disposal people, but, you know, it seems like every day when I walk through there, somebody's dumped another TV or something off in that. And it's, it's a shame that, that we have people that abuse our parks in that sense. I wish we, we could, we could, and it, it is kind of in a location that is hard to monitor, but I do think it's great, but it's, it's a, it's a nice park, it's one of my favorite parks in the city, so thank you.
Yeah, and just, just to make a note, around the current improvements, grass hasn't grown back up, so you will see some dead spots, but we are gonna, we are gonna do with the, with the summer rye. The winter, the winter, it's, it's already over, so we have to wait till summer.
Maybe we could have Desert Valley Disposal put up some signs about their bulky item pickup at the park, so that people can see, oh, wait, I can just wait for the bulky item pickup.
Yeah, why, why lug it to the park? Just leave it in the street. Crazy, huh?
All right, move for, did I open public comments for this? Anybody? Is anybody, okay. Close public comments, I'll accept the motion.
I move we accept staff recommendations.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, move to future items. We, I always can talk to the city manager about that, or see me. Public comments, anybody in the public didn't get to speak at the beginning of the meeting may speak now. Close public comments, and we're going to move to closed session, and I'll have the city attorney announce our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have two items on for closed session this evening. Number one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, paragraph one of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine, Sierra Club and Center for Biological Diversity versus City of Desert Hot Springs and Atkinson Engineers et al., Riverside Superior Court, case number RIC one eight two one nine eight five. Second one is conference with legal counsel, potential initiation of litigation, paragraph four of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine. We have one matter.
We'll recess to closed session. Anyone would like to hang out, there will be a closed session report afterwards.